All right. Good evening. This is the June 21st of 2023 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next item on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway. Nobody signed up, but I do know our county commissioner wanted to come and share a few things with us. So I'll turn it over to our county commissioner, Carla Bingham, and let you speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted, I'll be very brief, to share some exciting news that on Tuesday, the county board did approve the conservation easement and a $500,000 legacy bond for the Mississippi Dunes property. So I just wanted to come share that delightful news and proud partnership with the city of Cottage Grove. So appreciate all the effort that and leadership that the city has provided in that, the staff, and of course, we need to thank our wonderful volunteers on both parks boards, both for the city and the county commission board.
Yeah, and I'll just mention this for the general public, the money that is being given, if you will, to the city of Cottage Grove is to continue to expand that park along the river, which is our ultimate goal, is to make sure that we have full coverage, if you will, meaning park and open space all along the entire length of that property down there. So we're very excited and thank you for the county's support of making that happen.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on open forum? All right, saying none, I'll go ahead and close open forum, and we'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right, so we have motion by councilmember Dennis, second by councilmember Thede. All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to presentations. We do have two this evening. The first one, and I'll ask council to join me down in front, is the awarding of the Cottage Grove Public Safety Board Craig Woolery scholarships. And so Julie, right, I almost say Cindy all the time. Julie is going to kind of walk us through this, but yeah, I know it's my wife, sitting next to you there. So we'll meet down there, and why don't you guys come on up front? I'm going to hand this over to you, because you're obviously representing the board here, and I know we have councilmember Olson, who's, you want to start with? All right, I'm gonna, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Julie, and the Public Safety Board. This is a really exciting night. As many of you know, the Craig Woolery Scholarship was started by my wife, Kim, and I here a few years ago after Craig retired from his many years of faithful service to the city of Cottage Grove. And he served in a variety of capacities, the last of which was he was our Director of Public Safety. The reason that we started the scholarship in Craig's name is because we feel very strongly that public safety is truly the foundation of a healthy community. And in order to have a great public safety department, you have to have great individuals serving in all of the various roles that are part of a great public safety department. That includes police, fire, emergency management services, et cetera. And we wanted to encourage local young people to follow in Craig's footsteps and pursue a career in the public safety field. In order to make that happen, we were hopeful that we might be able to raise a few dollars every year to give some young people who were very passionate about public safety career a leg up with a scholarship. And I've been very, very grateful to watch as the years have gone by how many people have chosen to contribute to the Craig Woolery Scholarship Fund, which is managed through our outstanding Public Safety Board here in the city of Cottage Grove. It started out with an annual donation of $500, and we've kind of kicked it up a notch every year since then, and we hope to continue to do that. And then, of course, members of the public can participate at any time and donate to the Craig Woolery Scholarship Fund, and I'm sure Julie will give you some details in terms of, you know, how you could do that. But it's always fun to see the young people who, you know, really want to make a career of public safety and hopefully work here in the city or in one of our surrounding agencies locally in South Washington County, because it truly is a calling. And it takes a very special person to do a good job. Craig Woolery was one of those people. We have many of those people serving on our public safety department now here in the city of Cottage Grove, surrounding communities, Washington County, et cetera. And I've no doubt that the recipients that are going to receive their awards this evening are going to follow in those footsteps. So thank you so much.
All right, there we go. So I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you. I would like to say a big thank you to also the Lions Club, who matched Justin's and Kim's donation this year. So we're increasing the donations, which means we can always increase the recipient award for next year. So tonight, we have Brylee and Tia and Joe. And these three young individuals are going to be the recipients of this year's Craig Woolery Scholarship Awards. And it's just a community service, starting out young, working your way up, and then finally deciding that this is going to be the path I'm going to go on. So we're just excited for your career. We're excited for your schooling. The rest of the Cottage Grove Public Safety Board is backing you. So congratulations. So let's go with Joe first. He's up on the board, top of the board. Congratulations. That's your check to help with your tuition. Next up, we have Tia Russell. Congratulations, Tia. It's always great to see females that are going to be starting to go into the public service and criminal justice and... Yes, yes. And last, we have Brylee Dana. Congratulations, Brylee. She's staying, she's also an outstanding softball player. So along with this scholarship, she's got some softball experience and get with that program. And her path is going to be a little different. There's some FBI that was stated in there, so you never know. So we've got a lot of areas to fill here. Also, we're looking for people that are interested in EMS and fire training, because that is a need for every community, and it's the first responders. So we're looking for that. So on behalf of the Public Safety Board, Justin and all the other people that have donated to this worthy scholarship fund, thank you very much.
Yeah, we do want Kim here. You want to mention?
Okay. I was asked to mention that the scholarship has gone from $500 to $1,000. And so they're receiving $1,000 tonight. And then hopefully, with the amount that we got next year, it could be quite a bit higher. So.
There we go.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
There you go. Awesome. One, two, three. We're going to take another for prosperity. One, two, three. And that's good.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That is amazing for, and kudos to everybody that did the donations and to the Public Safety Board for putting the program, and obviously councilmembers also thank you for getting it started. It just goes once again back to helping out the community. So, all right. So next on our presentation this evening is the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And Brenda Malinowski is going to walk us through this. So welcome, Brenda.
Mayor, members of the council, I have Matt Mayer here with KDB. He will do the audit presentation for this evening. But I just wanted to point out that Matt is retiring at the end of June. He came, he's been with KDB for a while, but KDB has been our audit partner since 2013. And so we wanted to wish him well. As he's been here, and I was thinking about Matt, as we've worked throughout the years, we'll miss his professionalism, his knowledge and his integrity. So without, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you for the kind words, Brenda. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, great to see you again. Got another good report here for you for the 22 fiscal year. My job tonight is to summarize about 250 pages worth of data that you received in your packets and give you the results of our audit for the 2022 fiscal year, as well as a little financial analysis. I know Brenda and her team do a great job in keeping you posted on where you stand, but sometimes it's good to hear an outsider's perspective and just confirm that and match that up with what you're hearing internally. Our job as auditors is not one of accountants. You have the finance team to put the books together, to keep the transactions, and to basically keep you posted on what's going on here at the city. Our job is to come in as an independent party and test, examine, and give an opinion on those financials so that you can trust them, the public can trust them, and the Office of the State Auditor, who is the recipient of these, can trust them as well. We do that through an independent auditor's report, and we provide it an unmodified or clean opinion. It's on our firm's letterhead in front of the larger document, the ACFOR. And that means that the numbers we're going to be looking at tonight are a true and accurate picture of the city's financial position at the end of the 22 fiscal year. Want to also acknowledge that this is an award-winning document. The city goes above and beyond the basics or the base level of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare what's called an ACFOR, and that is an annual comprehensive financial report that has pretty much any possible piece of information you would want to know about the city's finances or its operations each fiscal year. That particular document is submitted to a national organization to be reviewed and awarded, and this is the 32nd consecutive year that the city has received that award. So kudos to the finance team for their work in putting that together, and also to you as a governing body and dedicating yourselves to that full transparency and completeness in presentation. Three audit reports as well that I want to talk about beyond the actual independent auditor's report. There's one of Minnesota legal compliance. The state auditor wants us to make sure that you're following all the statutes that apply to municipalities here in the state, things like contracting and bidding, conflicts of interest and the like. We had no issues, no findings for the 2022 fiscal year. You received federal money again in 2022, and whenever you receive that, the feds want to make sure that you're using it correctly. This year was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds that you're using on a utility project, and no findings, no issues related to that. And then finally, when it comes to internal control, we provide a report on that as well. This is how you do business as an organization, how you transact, how you establish policies, procedures to safeguard the city's assets and ensure accurate financial reporting at the end of each year. And we had no issues that rose to a material weakness or significant deficiency level there. So this report is about as good as it can get. Four different reports, all the best that we can provide you. And again, a credit to the finance team under the leadership of Finance Director Malinowski. If I may, I'd like to take maybe five to seven more minutes and just give you a little bit of financial analysis on how the year went for you, or take a quick look at the general fund, and also your enterprise funds or your business type funds. Those are the funds that most citizens interact with and probably the ones that you as a council have the most interest in as well. The general fund is really centered around the budget. And if I use two different metrics, the first of those to evaluate the success of your general fund each year is how you complied with the budget. And if you look in the left-hand column, you'll see your final amended budget for the year, the bottom line, was basically a break even, a small deficit of $121,000. But when you're looking at a $21 million budget overall, a deficit like that is pretty much a break even. You intended your financial health to stay relatively the same at the beginning of the year as it was at the end of the year. And if you look at the actual results, the bottom line, that's just what you did. You outperformed it a little bit, about $209,000 surplus, so you outperformed by about $300,000. So that's good news. And if we look at the details of that, you can see that those that have budget responsibility, executing on that budget, your department heads, and also the finance team to ensuring that revenue stream comes in, did an excellent job in projecting and processing that. You had a budget of $21.2 million for revenue. Actual revenue came in at $21.9 million. That's about $650,000 better than anticipated. The big numbers there that jump out at you are licenses and permits and charges for services. Both of those are development-related revenues. It was a big year development-wise here at the city, and as a result, you certainly outperformed on those numbers. Another number that might catch your eye is that investment earnings, and it is literally negative for the 2022 fiscal year. And that seems kind of odd, but if you've been watching the news, you know that interest rates have been rising significantly over the course of the last year as the Fed raises the rates. And what happens is when you have a fixed income portfolio that is at the old interest rates, the value of those securities goes down. So we have to write as part of our accounting process, the instruments down to their fair value as to what you could sell them at as of the end of the year. That doesn't mean you're going to do that. You will hold them to maturity. You will get the par value back, and this is just a temporary recognition of the drop in book value with the interest rate situation. So we would anticipate that reversing in the future and probably seeing some gains as the interest rates start to plateau or come back down. The one thing I do want to point out here, though, is total expenditures. Again, each of the department has done an excellent job in executing on their budget, a small overage of about $354. There were some inflationary pressures that a lot of the departments were feeling this year that really took off in 2022 as well, along with those interest rates and some of the challenges in staying right within that. But again, about a one and a half percent variance. So I think the budget was executed very well for the 2022 fiscal year. The other metric I'm going to use for you is to evaluate your financial health in the context of your fund balance. And the fund balance is what's left over after the end of the year. And your policy here at Cottage Grove is to have 55% of next year's budget in fund balance at the end of each year. So you've got basically a half a year worth of resources to get through the first half of the next year, and also a little bit of a contingency piece in place as well. And if you do the math on that $13.3 million fund balance represented by the gray bar there under 2022, you're right at 55% again for 2022. So you're right in line with the policy. Again, the two metrics I use for general fund success, did we follow the budget? Did we stay within the parameters you as a council set? The answer to that is yes. Did you achieve your level of financial health that you wanted for the year? That is a fund balance of 55% at the end of the year. That answer is yes as well. So a good job on the general fund for 2022. I'm going to skip a few charts. If you had real significant interest in them, please ask me about them at the end. But I want to dive in on the enterprise funds and wrap things up here for you. We're going to look at these enterprise funds a little bit differently. They are more of a fee-for-service. They're not so budget-oriented. So your job as council members is to keep an eye and ensure that the revenue stream is sufficient to maintain a healthy financial position, as well as cover the cost of doing business in each of these funds. Now, the streetlight fund does receive quite a bit of non-operating revenue that's not shown here, and we'll see that the financial health of the fund has been relatively stable. But this chart does show that the charges for services in relation to the operating expenses of this fund do fall short each year. It's really a development-driven fund, and despite the development activity on the building and permanent charges for services, the actual streetlight piece of that development this year was a little bit slow. And as a result, you can see revenue and expenses are both down, although you do see a small operating income without depreciation factored in for the year. After a high back in 2018 of almost a little over $800,000, the fund balance has come down, but it has plateaued and has not gone down significantly since that first drop in 2019. Keep an eye on that fund. Make sure that charges for services are sufficient to cover the cost of doing business and decide what a reasonable level of financial health is. You're spending about $1 million a year in this fund, about $200,000 of that's depreciation, so maybe $800,000 in cash flow, and you've got about half of that in reserve. So about where your general fund is on a 50% fund balance standpoint. The EMS fund, looks like it had kind of a challenging year. I think there's a lot of kind of background accounting associated with this number. You did change vendors for billing during the year, so we had some transition there as well. And in that transition, the finance team really evaluated the collectibility of a lot of the receivables in this fund. It's really a challenging fund when it comes to the decisions regarding who's actually going to pay the bills, the amount that you're going to get from insurance companies and other resources, and how much you're ultimately going to have to write off. And the finance team decided to be fairly conservative this year in that allowance for doubtful accounts and bring that revenue down to about $1.3 million for the year. You can see operating losses as a result of that, and the financial health of the fund did drop fairly significantly from its high last year of $1.2 million down to about $344,000. I think that would be one you as a governing body probably want to continue to monitor and get consistent reports on it, and I'm sure Brenda will be very happy to do that for you. But when that margin or that fund balance is down there where it is in relation to your operations, which are about $2 million, $2 million a year, you want to make sure that you've got the resources to keep that fund self-sufficient and self-supporting. So we'll continue to watch and evaluate the collectibility of the receivables in that fund. But again, a conservative choice was made this year on how to approach that, and we'll see how that ultimately shakes out as the dollars come in in 2023 and new billing occurs as well. Water operations for the year was another fund that felt the pressures of inflation. You can see the blue bar there. Expenses were up about $500, $600,000 from the prior year. Revenue flat year over year, $3.6 million exactly for both years. And as a result, you did still have operating income with depreciation factored out, but we are starting to see losses again. And I would attribute that mostly to the revenue stream being relatively flat year over year there, again, with that inflationary pressures. Again, keeping an eye and ensuring that that fund stays self-supportive and that you're choosing the rate structure in a way to cover those costs on every day, every year basis. That being said, the financial position of this fund did improve year over year. So it is still in a good place, and it has about an $8 million fund balance in relation to about $4 million of operations. So you're very healthy in that respect, that you certainly can cover operating costs. But this fund also would probably call on that fund balance for some capital needs. So you're going to want to make sure that you've got a reasonable reserve for operations, but also a reasonable reserve for capital there as well. Sewer fund also had a big spike in expenses this year. You can see that, the blue bar again, 2021 versus 2022. In this fund, though, we can blame them at council and the charges that they have for processing your waste. And that was about $500,000 year over year. That's almost the entire increase in expenses. And as a result of that, you can see that you did have an operating loss this year, but with depreciation factored out, still cash flowing properly positively from operations. This fund balance did take a little bit of a step back, and I do want to remind you that while we do have almost a $6 million fund balance in this fund, about half of that is an IOU to yourself that helped build City Hall here. We took a loan from the sewer fund, and so that is part of your fund balance, part of the financial health of that fund, but it's owed from other funds. So the actual cash that's available for operations in this fund is about $3 million at the end of the year. Finally, I know you like to have some perspective on how you compare to other cities, and we consider your peer group to be those cities in that $20 to $100,000, excuse me, $20 to $100,000 people and population. And a typical city your size has revenue coming into the city of about $1,100 per person. About $557 of that, half of that is property taxes. Another big portion are governmental, and charges for services are the main categories of an average city in the state of Minnesota. Here at Cottage Grove for 2022, that number was 1,300, so about $200 better per capita than a typical city your size. That being said, the property tax levy was $100 less per person here at Cottage Grove than it was at other cities around the state your size. You did better in the areas of intergovernmental revenue. A lot of different grants and resources coming from the state for various projects helped considerably during the year. And again, that development revenue, that licenses and permits and charges for services played a big role in putting you above the state averages when it comes to resources coming into the city. On the spending side, you're right in line with a typical city your size. Typical city at 739, as far as current spending goes, that's what it takes to run the city on an everyday basis, things like the police department, the public works, the people here at City Hall. And it's here at Cottage Grove, it was almost exactly that number, 751, just slightly above that. And so you're right in line with the averages there. It was a big year, capital project-wise, again, in 2022. About $550 was spent per capita versus the state average of 317. And another number that's nice to see, the last one there, debt service, you spent about $100 to service You spent about $100 to service the debt or the bond of debt here at the city during 2022. That's about two-thirds of what an average city has. They're about 50% higher at $144 per capita. So that indicates to us that you're using debt judiciously and that you're on a pretty much a pay-as-you-go basis for the major needs that you have here at the city of Cottage Grove. I'll leave it at that. I appreciate the chance to present to you one last time. Miss the opportunity to work with you in the future. Wish you the best. I know you'll be in good hands with my successor. And if there's anything you wanted to discuss further or questions you had, I'll be happy to stay until those are resolved before acceptance.
Fantastic, thank you. Councilmember Olson.
Matt, thanks. It's always fun to have you come and kind of lay this out for us. And obviously, we wish you well in your retirement. I don't know if Brenda got cake, but if she didn't, that's too bad. She probably have had cake. But I wanted to, again, let you know how much we appreciate all of the information that you provide. I found a couple of these numbers very interesting, as I do every year when you present. There's always something in there that catches my attention. You know, you were very clear about the fact that in terms of our property tax revenue collections, you know, when you look at us versus our peer communities, we run about $100 less than our peers on average. And additionally, we run about $45 less than our peers in terms of our debt service. And I think the term you used was pay-as-you-go, which really does speak to the value that the property taxpayer here in the city of Cottage Grove receives. But what also caught my eye, and this is what I'd like to ask you about, is in terms of our revenue, a lot of that is development-driven, and that's very clear in your report. And I'm just curious, as you kind of examine the numbers, is there anything that stood out to you in terms of, you know, why we've been so successful with, you know, capturing ongoing development revenue? I mean, it's been a busy time, I know that. But is there anything that stood out to you as an analyst that made you say, wow, you know, look at what these folks are doing? And perhaps a reason why?
Yeah, I'd be speculating. I think I got to be careful to editorialize when it comes to that. But I think obviously demographically, it's, you regionally here, you're seeing the development, the growth in the city, the population certainly is a way to look at it here. The last few years, you've grown in just the last three from 38,000 to 41,000 in just a two-year period from 2020 to 2022. And responding and reacting to that is the building and the development that's been going on. And that does place a significant burden on the city team here. I mean, not only the planners, but the inspectors and everybody that's associated with that. And what you do to respond and react to that is basically have a fee-for-service type scenario. You have the licenses and permits for the actual work that's done and the inspections related to that. But then there's also charges for services that can be levied when there is actual value to the developers and the individuals that are participating in that development. And what I found interesting, I think, was this particular one that I skipped over. If you go back to 2018, three-quarters or 76% of your revenue is from the property taxpayer and 10% was from licenses and permits. If we fast forward five years, that number doubled when it came to licenses and permits in actual real dollars and nearly tripled. It went from 1.7 million to 4.4 million in license and permit revenue coming into the general fund. And what that did is bring those ratios significantly closer together, 20% and 69%. So what that means is you're not as reliant on the property tax as a revenue source. And that allows, you know, that flexibility to have other revenue streams to address that. And especially in a year when your investment portfolio took a step back, it was as nice to see. Now, is that sustainable? And is that going to continue for the long term? Probably not. But what that is going to do is build a new tax base, and it's going to be a cycle for you going forward. And that would be my advice to the council is that as you transition and start to see, I used the word plateau earlier, you see that license and permit revenue start to plateau, you'll know that that development's starting to slow down. But what you hopefully will see out of that is a stronger tax base and realizing the operating needs associated with that and leveraging that new tax base to continue to provide service. So hopefully, that provides you my perspective.
That's a magnificent answer. I really appreciate you pointing that out and referring back to the slide that was originally skipped over. I think that that definitely encapsulates what I was looking for. And we're particularly grateful for the balance that we seem to have now achieved with regard to both residential development, but commercial development, especially in our business park. And I think that's helped us out a lot. And I think the numbers bear that out. Thank you.
All right, councilmember Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor. On that same slide, and we just talked about property tax and special assessment, one of the goals that we've had over all these years was to build through the top end, especially in the areas of commercial and retail. Do you have any measurement that you could provide just to give us an idea by percent what the difference is between residential, treat that as a single category, and looking at commercial and industrial?
Look at Brenda, do you have that split? I don't know if that split is in the act or not in the property tax levy.
I know at one point years ago, it was like 72% burden on the residential taxpayer. And I'm just wondering how after all of these years, where we've had, not last year per se, or this year, but previous to that, where we had record amounts of volume coming in relative to industrial and commercial.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that at my fingertips. We're checking to see if it might be in the act. For if not, that information is readily available from other third-party sources, though. We can get that for you.
2022 is probably not a good year to look at because we had such a 20% increase in our residential properties. And so when we look back, it's 80% residential and 20% commercial, but that is skewed for this year. So we'd want to look at a 10-year trend for you, and we can do that.
That'd be awesome if you could. Thank you.
All right, council, any other comments?
I guess, Brenda, I probably could have let you stay up there for a quick sec before you went all the way back to this. My question was, and maybe just to share with us, and I know we've been dealing with things from a staff and council level with the EMS fund. Obviously, we have some major changes happening in there. And I know he was mentioning, Matt was mentioning, we're changing vendors and such. And I know our challenge, I'll just say this publicly, our challenge is, I mean, we can charge whatever we're going to charge for ambulance ride, right? Or services, but if people can only pay this much, there's, or even, you know, with Social Security or Medicare, Medicaid. What are you looking at going forward? One, with, you know, that fund, I guess, and two, with our new company that we hired?
Yes. We changed providers on October 10th of last year. And so the first six months of 2023, we've been monitoring. And I looked at cash flow tonight between 2022 versus 2023 because cash is, you know, what we look at in that fund. And it's a $600,000 swing in the first six months of this year compared to last year. So it's having, that billing change is having a positive impact on that fund. We were able to go back and do some collection efforts on some of the old bills. And so those came into the fund this year. So that 600, about 300 was some old accounts that we were able to collect. And we'll keep monitoring. But with ambulance, as you know, with the Medicare and the Medicaid, we only get a certain percentage. And so as we move forward in our model, and we've always been, done a great job here in Cottage Grove on always looking at the model and being able to operate it. And so what we're suggesting is going forward that when we hire firefighter paramedics, that instead of doing 75% to the EMS fund and 25% to the general fund, we do that swing because we know that with Medicare and Medicaid, we just get a certain percentage of the call.
Okay, thank you. And I kind of knew that, but I thought it would be good. When you look at that number on that slide, do you see how much of a loss there is taken on it? And, you know, just for the general public, just so I can say this, it isn't, the way it's, the way the EMS system works is it's not just Cottage Grove that we're covering. We are covering or surrounding communities, specifically Sampel Park, Newport Island, Gray Cloud and that. And so, you know, ultimately, I think our goal, and we've talked about as a council if we're possible, was to make sure that each city kind of pays their own. But we are, in most cases, we are solvent, right? I mean, that's the way it's been. There's enough revenue coming in to offset the expenses, but there are some challenging years like we just came through in that particular fund. Yeah, councilmember Dennis, you have something to add?
I did, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for bringing that point up because, about the other communities, because this is something that we, as a council, have been talking about for years. When you take a look at the different communities and how they pay and the amount by percentage of bills that actually get paid that we're able to collect on, I can't, I don't think any of us at this moment could give those measurements, but we know there's a disparity that's happening there. And somewhere along the line, I mean, to have a program like this, very important, detrimentally important to the well-being of our community, but also, you know, we want to make sure we're being fair to the people here that are paying the bills, that our community is, A, getting that service when we need it, not having all of our equipment or people out of town and then having to wait for longer response times when we have others come in to fill that void. And then also making sure that they're getting the fair, you know, return on the investment as well. So we've got budget time coming up here very quickly, and maybe that's something we want to look at again.
Yep, every year we do that.
Every year.
All right, so any other council comments? So, Matt, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Cambada.
I just wanted to add that I know if you talk to any of our public safety personnel, they pride themselves in our short response times. I think anyone who's ever needed an ambulance appreciates that we get there quickly. So, you know, even though it's hard to keep the books on a service like this, I see this as an essential service for our community. And I think we should be proud of how the service has performed. And, you know, I think as far as the numbers are shaking out, when we talked about making this change in terms of who is going to be collecting on our behalf, we talked about the potential to recoup some of the, some of this old bad debt. And I'm happy to see that that's turned around so quickly. So I think come budget time, we'll have some more empirical data on some of the old debt as far as, you know, what we can project for collections moving forward. And, yeah, I hope we continue to run a really great service.
Absolutely. And I don't, and just so I can say, I don't think that any of us are saying do away with the service, just so I can say it. But it's just a point as we were talking about. And it's great to hear that we're getting some better collection numbers this year than we've had in the past with this new company. So that is, that's beneficial to us right off the bat, so. But Matt, I wanted to thank you, being the mayor here for, this is my 15th year, having you come and show up. And then you're off to retirement, is that what I'm hearing? Well, have a great time in your retirement, and we'll miss you. And thank you for the years of service that you provided to the city of Cottage Grove. And Brenda, to you and the team, thank you. Great job on the budget and the process over the last year. And I'll say managing the pennies and the nickels and the dimes as we always do in this community. And so the community should be, is proud of the work that we do to make sure, and that you do, so.
And Matt, you know, you can always come back just to have fun with us, too. So, you know, it's an open invitation.
Yeah, if you need something part-time, I mean, let us know.
Presentations at City Council, Cottage Grove City Council.
Pretty specialized.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Thank you both. All right. So moving on, out to now consent agenda. Is there anything council wants to pull on tonight's consent? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Jennifer Levitt.
Mayor, can you please accept the annual financial report?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot, I missed that. All right, so we need a motion to accept the financial report.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Dennis, second by councilmember Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Move consent.
All right, so we have a motion by consent, to move consent by councilmember Olson, second by councilmember Thede. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So if anybody was here for anything on tonight's consent agenda, all of those items have been approved. Number eight is approved dispersments. Eight A is to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cambada. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Number nine is public hearings. We have none this evening. Ten is bid awards are none this evening. We do have a number 11, which is a regular agenda. We do have one item on our agenda this evening, which is tobacco compliance check violation. And I believe our buddy out here is going to take us through this.
Irish Ray Renzel?
Yes, Mr. Renzel.
On my mail, council, I'd like to present a quick tutorial of what we've done on alcohol compliance or tobacco compliance and one violation that we had this year. So real quick, the mission is in front of you. The person that was in violation is not here today. I don't see him in the, in the audience at all, and I'm not sure. He was, he sent a letter, so we'll just go through this as quickly as possible if any questions that you have and move along from there. Kind of talked about the responsibility staff has for keeping business in compliance with state law and the ordinances. The background, on the 23rd of 2023, Public Safety did the tobacco compliance. Cottage Grove Tobacco LLC at 6998 East Street, Suite 100 failed the compliance. They were the only business in town that failed the compliance check in this year. Procedure, just so everyone's aware, as we move forward and as we continue to do this, we have volunteer decoys that are given instructions on how to take action. They arrive at the police department predetermined date and time, wear everyday clothing, don't change your appearance. We take pictures of them prior to, which is included in the case file. They're instructed to answer any questions, give factual information, show IDs, don't lie during the thing, the compliance. They are given their driver's license, their standard driver's license. We'll kind of talk about the driver's license and how they've changed over the years. They're uploaded to the case file. They're given money. That money is then recorded by serial number and taken a photograph of and then collected back if a violation occurs. Here's your driver's license and how the difference is. As you can see, the minor ones is a different orientation, and it clearly states that you are under 21, and it has a date. So it's fairly easy in the state of Minnesota to determine whether or not someone is of age or underage while purchasing either tobacco or alcohol, and tobacco in this case. The facts, the police report is included in your packet. If you want me to go over that, I can. However, the decoy is 19 years old, went in, transaction was complete, bought a chew product, a smokeless tobacco. The employee never asked for an identification, so this wasn't a, I looked at the ID and thought the person was of age, it just was never identified. And the decoy came back out, and the officers went in and spoke with the individual involved. The employee was questioned. That was all on video and audio recording of our body camera. He did admit to the violation, believing that he had a customer that was a normal customer for them that had been identified in the past. However, clearly, that wasn't the case in this incident. We did make contact with the owner-manager, explained the violation. Did email a letter that is attended or attached to your packet that you'll see from Director Kerner. The citation was for the employee who made the sale. In addition to this ordinance or violation was sent to the owner. And the owner was advised to attend this council meeting if you would like to contest or just talk about the incident. And the owner is not in attendance today, so I'll stand for the recommendation. Is, one was here, and then number two is the impose the penalty since he is not here and is admitting to that guilt according to the letter by not attending.
Okay. Council, any questions at all? Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Captain Renzel. What is the business name? I'm assuming that on the building, it doesn't say Cottage Grove Tobacco LLC.
No, I think it's just Cottage Grove Tobacco.
Cottage Grove Tobacco. Do you know how many years they've been in operation?
This is their second year. So in 2022, they passed their compliance check. So it is a newer business. It's attached to the ACE hardware. is a newer business. It's attached to the Ace Hardware at the end, which used to be a cafe.
Sure.
So that's where that is in relationship to the city.
Okay. So this is one violation within two years of operation.
Correct.
And in your view, is the scheduled penalty adequate for this violation?
I, I believe it is. I think following the ordinance that we have set forth is a good step.
And, and it's unfortunate that the, the owner isn't here, so that we can have some dialogue with that individual. But what, what would the penalty be if they should have a second violation? Do you know what that is?
I would have to look that up. It's not generally under my, that's investigative.
The, the reason I ask is, I know when we do-
Councilmember Olson, real, just quick, Amanda, who is standing in, I should have said that earlier, our city attorney for Cory, has that answer, I believe.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. Yes, it's $600.
Okay. The reason I brought it up is because with alcohol-related offenses, we will often do some training, or will recommend training. Is that something that we may want to do in this instance, or is that something we would implement should there be a second violation?
Yeah, I don't think this is a training issue. This is clearly the, the owner, one confronted by the officers and talked to the employee, said he's taught them, he's trained them to identify them. It was the, the employee at the time feeling like this was a general customer that they've had in the past, and-
Okay.
Didn't identify them because of that reason. It wasn't a, I don't understand how to look at the ID or any training issue. It's, if somebody comes in, they look under whatever their age is, under the age of 21, they should identify them all, even if they've been in before.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. I, I know it's a little bit apples to oranges, but I also know some of the purveyors of tobacco products in the community ask for an ID every time. And I just wondered if that was a best practice that somebody like this may want to implement to avoid that second penalty. But if, if we feel like they've already gotten that training, and it was just pure and simple mistake, then so be it.
A lot of businesses have software built right into their POS system that requires an ID to be registered for a sale to continue. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions by council? The only, I guess the only one thing I'll add, real, just real quick, is we always come to this point, we talk about the ones that maybe didn't pass. I did want to just recognize the fact that all the rest of the tobacco businesses in our community passed with flying colors, and I believe we, and it's not on here because we didn't have any. Every single liquor, I believe, passed. Am I correct?
Yeah, to my recollection, everyone has passed this last year.
Yeah. So that was, that was awesome. So I'm just very glad that we have one particular business, as you know, that we were a little concerned about, but they did pass this, this round. So it looks like the, the processes and things that we're doing to help our businesses be successful in this area is working, so.
Yeah, I think we always want educational enforcement, and that's what part of this compliance is, is really to educate them and ensure that they're following state law.
You got it. All right, council. So before you is the recommendation. I'll need a motion in a second.
I'll move that we impose the scheduled penalty for the first violation in a 36-month period of a $300 fine.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right. We're down to 12, which is council comments request. We'll start with Councilmember Cambada. Does that mean you're good?
I don't want to steal Dave's thunder, so.
Oh.
I, I had a great weekend last weekend, though. So thanks, thanks to Dave and, and all the volunteers at Strawberry Festival. My kids had a blast. I'll leave it at that.
All right. Sounds good. Councilmember Dennis?
Well, I am going to steal some thunder because it was fantastic. Everything, every aspect of this. And I had the pleasure, as did Dan Shone, of eating hamburgers cooked by Councilmember Olson. And I believe we got the last hamburgers that you guys had left.
Yeah, we ran out of cheese.
Ran out of cheese. No cheese, that's a problem. But, you know, more cheese next year.
That's part of our after-action report.
Yeah. But it was, it was absolutely amazing. And I, I, I don't know this for a fact, but I feel based on all the years that I've been going, that we probably had more people show up than ever before.
It definitely was.
Food trucks ran out of food. Lions ran out of beer. It was incredible. But just people having fun, and, you know, the amount of promotion that went into it, getting news, major news channels to pick it up and, and do that, and, and just everything. It was just fantastic across the board. So I was very impressed about it, as usual, and just give kudos to these guys for their work that they did, so. And every, every other volunteer, too.
Absolutely. All right. All right. Councilmember Thede?
So yes, it was, it was a fantastic year. And I guess the first thanks should be given to Mother Nature, because she cooperated. We had fantastic weather. The rain held off and everything that was, was projected earlier in the week. So, so that was great. And so, yes, I'd like to thank all the, the people on the committee who did a fantastic job. We, we, I think we haven't totaled up everything yet, but I, I think this is a record year. And, you know, it's fantastic. I know that, that on, on Saturday night, it was like, I don't know, there, there wasn't very much open space on, on the parking lot in Kingston. I mean, it was just loaded with, with people. And, and so it was a fantastic year, and will get her into the books. And, and thanks to everyone, thanks to everybody that attended. Oh, I would, I know what I was going to mention, too, is that one of the things we did this year, too, was to do a little bit of an expanded family night on Thursday night, which actually was attended very well. So that worked out pretty good, and I would imagine that we'll continue to do that, and have some more things going on on Thursday night for family night and so forth. So, yeah. So thanks to everyone. It was a fantastic, fantastic year this year.
Absolutely. All right. Councilmember Broson?
Keeping with the Strawberry Fest theme, just a couple of things that I think folks might find a little bit interesting. I'm going to use data from our Cottage Grove Lions Club, because we had our meeting last night. And so we recapped a little bit of, of the weekend's events and how we did with those. Thursday night, we counted about 2,000 people in the park, which doesn't sound like all that much, but comparatively to previous Thursday nights, it was unbelievable. And we sold a lot of food and a lot of beverages on Thursday night that we wouldn't normally sell. Friday and Saturday combined roughly 20,000 visitors to our Lions tent throughout the course of the, the 48-hour period, and we had a record year in sales. I'm not going to tell you exactly how much, but it was a staggering number. And as was mentioned earlier, we were scrambling all weekend to keep up with food, with beverages, et cetera. We, we did a lot of extra shopping, and, and even at that, we ran out. But that's really the goal. That's what we want. But, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't give a, a huge amount of thanks to Lori Olson, and Samantha Crabtree, and Dave, and Eric Witt, and Katie Tobertsoffer, and all the other folks.
Willie.
Yeah, Willie Tennis, all the other folks who participated and, and organized this event. The bands were wonderful. The weather held out. The parade was terrific. Sue Shay and Scott Shay and Mark Helgerson did a, a really great job with that. And I think people just had fun. I also want to give a lot of thanks to our city staff. People may not realize this, but, you know, city participation in Strawberry Fest is at no charge. So when you look at, you know, the amount of work that our people do at Strawberry Fest at no charge, the festival committee, you know, is, is always very grateful for the public safety presence, for the park and rec presence, for the public works presence. I know Zach, Dr., our Parks Director, who also happens to be a St. Paul Park Newport Lion, was out at the park for the majority of the event. And he was a phone call away. If we had a trash can that needed to be dumped, if we had a recycle bin that needed to be taken care of, his folks were on it. And, and I got to tell you, they were responsive. They were unbelievable, keeping bathrooms clean, making sure the porta-potties were good. Public Safety had a terrific presence at the park so that people could feel safe and have a really good time. We had Washington County SWAT participate as well. So it, it really was a culmination of many, many, many efforts, and lots of volunteer hours, lots of volunteer hours. But it all came together. It's the best community event of the season every year, and this year was fantastic, outstanding, marvelous, spectacular. You pick your adjective. It was that. So thanks to everybody who had a hand in it.
Fantastic. So I'll just, I'll give one more stat, because it was an amazing event, since we're all kind of piggybacking. This, this stat kind of staggered me a little bit, but it gives you an idea of what, you know, with the number of people that showed up out there. Lori Olson was telling me, as, as everybody's aware, certain businesses out there did not take credit cards. So you had, like, you had to pay cash, right? Some, some businesses did and such. The ATM out there-
They ran out?
They, over $70,000 of cash-
Yeah.
Was dialed out at the ATM machine.
Yeah.
And I did know that one, at one point during the night, because my son even came up to me, and he said, "The cash machine's out of money," because they wanted some more money to go buy stuff. So, and then they quickly, whoever we, you guys hired for that, quickly came out and, and refilled it. So that just goes to tell you how much excitement was out there, and people were having a good time, and the amount of revenue. And I hope that all the vendors did well. It sounds like they did very well. So I just wanted-
Very, very good reports back from, from food vendors, from, there was over, there's about 104, over 104 booths out in the marketplace this year. Most of those folks that we talked, I talked to, said it was a great year, and that it was, that they're going to come back next year and so forth. So, so yes, it was, it was great.
And, and the only, the only other piggyback, other than the, the kudos to our staff and the volunteers and that, was also to all the businesses that donated, too. There was a lot of sponsorship, sponsorships, which is my, kind of my segue a little bit, is the sponsorships for Strawberry Fest couldn't happen if it weren't for the volunteers and the sponsors. So I just wanted to, you know, I can't go down the whole list, because I don't have them in front of me. But everybody that gave money and time and effort to the festival was amazing. Did you want to add?
Yeah, I was just going to say, and relative to the sponsorship, for, for many years, you know, Sheila has been the main driver of, of getting those sponsorships and coordinating that. So I don't think we, we mentioned-
Yeah, Sheila Nits, I didn't mention her, but she's, she's obviously a key cog in the wheel. Yep.
Perfect. So that, that's my segue, though, because in about a week and a half from now, the next decent and fun event here in Cottage Grove, which is the 4th of July, I'll say, festival, because the Lions, once again, put on a lot of items. And they, they will be providing $25,000, well, these sponsors will be providing $25,000 worth of fireworks. They, they donated to this cause to make this event for our community special. North Point, Hyvee, 3M, Renewal by Anderson, Tennis Sanitation are all the businesses that each donated $5,000 to raise 25,000 with inflation. Obviously, last year was with inflation. They, obviously, we got 25,000 again to make sure that we put on an absolutely amazing show on the 4th of July. And again, it's at Kingston Park, so I encourage everybody to come out there, at, starting at 5 o'clock, when there'll be some food and, and games and things for, for kids to do. And, and parents, enjoy that great day. And we'll keep our fingers crossed that the weather is going to be in, in great shape.
And I'll, I'll just mention, those of you that, that like the fireworks at Strawberry Fest, the 4th of July will be about four to five times more spectacular, just based on cost.
That's exactly it. That is true. That is the difference. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, which is pretty exciting for me, and I know our staff, we in Cottage Grove have always, and this council has been very adamant of trying to go after funding sources for projects and things within our community. And earlier today, I'm, I am the, I have a appointee on the Metro, on the Transportation Advisory Board for the Met Council. And Cottage Grove today was awarded $7 million towards the Hunter Street and County Road 19 project, which is the extension from basically Jamaica going all the way to County Road 19, with a new roadway that'll, you know, eventually also connect to Langdon, new entrance for 3M. I did have, matter of fact, we'll be seeing them in a few minutes here, but I did get a chance to talk with the director of the plant at 3M, and they're pretty excited about that, too. They're a willing partner in working through this because it benefits all of us. For the general public, this is a particular area that frankly, we never thought, I believe, from a city standpoint, would ever be open for additional development to expand our business park. Whereas now 3M has about 500 acres, that they're interested in looking at some development opportunities, which means additional tax base and jobs and, and such for our community. So this road is integral in that. I want to mention very clearly, though, 7 million isn't the full amount. The full amount is about $36 million. So we also have other funding sources that we're working on. But to land $7 million of additional funds from the Met Council and that, and, and this process, it did pass unanimously. I was quite happy about that with my little spiel. But I do want to thank them and all the members of TAB for making that happen. And thank your staff for putting some of my talking points together. And I also want to thank our county, county, one of the county commissioners who's on TAB, and some of the county staff also helped make sure that this became a reality. So just wanted to throw those couple things out there. For the public, the next item for us is a workshop, which is open to the public. It is going to be in our training room. And this workshop is the, is an MPCA workshop, which involves the decommissioning plan and scheduled for the 3M incinerator. And what is, for us, I think, really nice about this, personally speaking, is we have 3M, and we have the MPCA in the same room with us.
With the county.
And the county, and some of our state officials, and all of us. So that's first time for us. So I think it's going to be an exciting evening to have some conversations about what's going on. Oh, Councilmember Dennis?
You know, I want to just say one thing here before we wrap this up, and so that people in the community understand. The work that the mayor has done for a number of years now, being involved with TAB and Metro Cities, and fostering relationships with our higher-end state-elected officials. The work that you have done of creating relationships and defining the need and leveraging all of this stuff together is truly remarkable. And the entire community should tip their hat to you.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it.
And that's, that's, that's a very straightforward, serious, factual statement that not every city even gets close to having somebody who does work that this guy does. And he comes under fire all the time, as we all do. And I can speak a little more freely now, and I'm doing it. But here's the thing, the, the community owes a debt of gratitude. And I really hope that maybe the newspaper, when they look at the transcript of our meeting tonight, there should be a little article written up about that, so people really understand the full measure of what you've brought to the table and the community. So on behalf of all of us, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're not going to adjourn in here. We will adjourn in the conference room. So everybody that's watching on TV, thank you, and have a great night.